Hey, it's really quiet, so I'm just making sure everybody can hear.
I can hear you.
Thanks, I was getting worried. Hey, does everyone have seven o'clock?
I do.
Okay, let's call to order the Columbia Township Planning Commission meeting on May 12, 2021 at seven o'clock. Start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll move to a roll call. Recall to state where it is from which you're coming. Uh, Dave?
Uh, hi, this is Dave Marsalotti, attending remotely from Columbia Township, Van Buren County, Michigan.
Thank you. Chris? Beverly? I see you on there, but you're still muted. Bev, are you there?
Okay, I got it. Sorry about that. Um, yes, I'm present, attending remotely from Van Buren County, Michigan.
Thank you. Anita?
Anita is on her way, but not here yet.
Okay, I thought I heard that she was planning to come, but...
Yeah, she messaged me a little bit ago early, so.
Okay. And Leslie Elrod, attending remotely from Columbia Township, Van Buren County, Michigan. Uh, let's move on to the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Uh, yes, there is a... Oh, no, thank you. It's, it's fixed. Perfect. Never mind.
Okay. Anybody else?
Oh, I'm good with it.
Okay. Um, hearing no alterations, I'll entertain a motion on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, let's move by Bev to approve the agenda as presented. Is there support?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, supported by Dave to approve the agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Okay, if no, then we'll do a roll call. Dave?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Leslie? Yes, motion passes. And then we'll move on to the April minutes. Just wanted to double check the date. I had done the 13th, but it's probably the 14th. Um, any changes to the minutes presented?
Um, yes, actually. I want to make a clarification on, uh, Marcia actually made a clarification on her comment about the pole barn. She, she meant for that comment concerning the density of the homes in the lake area. She meant properties in the lake area. She didn't mean the township in general. That's it. So the words "in lake area" should be inserted there, yeah, following the word "properties."
Okay, any other changes to the April 14th minutes?
Um, not for me.
Okay. Then, hearing no other changes.
Really quick before you take, uh, before you take a motion, Anita has arrived, so you may want to have her declare herself here.
No, you beat me to the punch. I was just gonna say, I see Anita's there, so let's have her, uh, roll called in. Anita, you're a, you can hear me now? Anita? Anita, are you there?
Yes, I'm here, sorry. Good grief. Um, I'm Anita Manley. I am attending remotely from Columbia Township, Van Buren County, Michigan.
Great.
My apologies for being late.
Thank you. Um, I don't know if you were here during the discussion of the minutes. Uh, the, uh, one change that was proposed was to add from Marcia's public comment that she was referring to density in, on the lakes, not in the township generally. So she was referring to lakes, lake property specifically.
Okay.
Um, did you have any other changes to the minutes?
No, I did not.
Okay. Um, so is there a motion pertaining to the April 14th minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes from April 14.
As amended?
As amended.
Okay, it was moved by Anita to accept the April 14, 2021 minutes as amended. Is there support?
I'll second that.
Go ahead, Dave.
Okay, yeah, I'll do it.
Okay. Supported by Dave. Any further discussion? Okay. And we'll do a roll call on the motion to approve the April 14th minutes as amended. Dave?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Anita?
Yes.
Leslie? Yes, motion passes. Uh, let's move on to public communications and public comments. At this time, I'd like to open public comments at 7:07. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Are there any comments at this time?
So, hi, my name is Vince Mano, um, and I have a, a couple of properties in Grand Junction. I, I don't know if this is the right forum for this, but I'm sorry, but I, I did talk to Tasha, um, you know, a couple of weeks back about kind of exploring or have, asking questions about the current zoning ordinances and, you know, what is capable of commercial properties. So I do own like one residential property and a commercial property. Uh, and I'm looking to see if I could get a better understanding of, you know, there are some limitations around like the new marijuana regulations around growing in commercial properties versus agricultural. Um, so curious, is this the right forum for that type of opportunity? Is that for the township board? And sorry if I'm way off on this one.
Now, if you're, um, looking to find, just find out more about it, I would start with Tasha and have a, have a sit down with her. Or you're welcome to set a meeting and come into the hall and have a discussion there.
Okay, and is that, um, like, can I reach out to you, or you said Tasha would be, probably be the best person first?
Uh, talk to, uh, either talk to Tasha or reach out to me outside of this meeting and we can have a further discussion.
Okay, yeah, and sorry if those were not the public comments you were looking for.
No, that's fine. Any other public comments?
Thank you though.
Thank you. Okay, um, I would normally ask if there are any communications received. Tasha was not able to be here this evening. Kristy, are you aware of any communications received or anybody else on the commission?
I am not.
Oh, I am. I got a email from Roger Flome. I thought everybody got it, but...
But I did not.
I did not either.
Oh, okay, well, it's about his neighbor is like paving over most of, this is on Saddle Lake. He lives on Saddle Lake and evidently his neighbor is paving over a good portion of her lot. And there seems to be really no restrictions as to how much you can pave over. And there, he's also complaining about a fence. Evidently, there's no ordinance. As to fences, anybody can put up as big a fence as they want. So I think, um, if I was more savvy, I would send this to you. But he is concerned about his, his neighbor like paving over, and I can see where that would be a problem. Somebody could put up, he said, two to 3,000 square feet of pavement, of concrete. And that she's paving over her septic system. Which should be of concern.
Right. Are you able to forward that, um, to the clerk so that that can be included in the record?
I could, yeah.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
I can do it.
Okay, any other communications?
Oh.
Oh, go ahead, is that Bev?
No, no, I, I just had a comment and it's probably not, um, correct to comment, so.
Okay. Okay, if there are no other comments or communications, we'll close public comment and communication at 7:11. There are no public hearings this evening, so we'll move on to new business. And I don't have anything on the agenda for new business unless there is some business that has come before the commission that's new. Normally, Tasha would bring that if there were some, so I'll assume that there is not any at this point. So let's move on to old business. Uh, first on the old business was a review of the amendments to the capital improvement plan. And that was mailed out to the commission members, um, oh, a week or two ago. Uh, thank you, Bev, for doing the first edit on that.
You're welcome.
Has everybody had a chance to read that?
I read it.
Yeah.
Yes.
I checked it out. I gotta commend you guys for doing this. This was a...
Yeah.
This would be overwhelming for me. And the writing.
Lot of work.
So, um, I think it does give us a place to start because I think the first draft is always the most difficult. Um, so I appreciate having the opportunity for a first draft, for sure. Um, but it gives us some, some room to go. And let me pull up my copy here.
So, so one thing I noticed were, um, your comments, Leslie, comparing that where sometimes it's six years and 10 years. I didn't go through it again or, you know, a couple of times to see if I could understand when it was supposed to be six and supposed to be 10 or, or what. So that was just something that I read in your comments that I did notice in it. So I'm not sure what it's supposed to be, but I did notice that it's different throughout the document.
Um, that was, um, referring to my, I think the first comment I made, which was on page, I don't know, some page. Let me put page numbers in here. Page 1A, that's the capital, oh, thank you, where it says typically four to 10. Um, so when I looked into it more, it looks like typically a capital improvement plan could range anywhere from four to 10. There was some variability in this plan, so it looks like to me that it was up to our discretion as to what we felt was an appropriate timeframe, somewhere between four and 10 years for the capital improvement plan. So, don't know what your thoughts were. I'm not sure why those different years were chosen, but whatever it is that we choose, I think it needs to be consistent throughout.
And I'm, I'm, Leslie, I, I'm thinking that it, I didn't see the source document that Ken used, but I'm thinking it, it may have had something to do with the source document also because that was something I noticed, the, um, the inconsistency about the timeline and some other things like that, so.
Okay.
Um, so thoughts about a timeline for, I think the master plan was for, supposed to be reviewed every five, correct?
Yes.
So do you want, I mean, of course, we're one now, first year into the master plan, so if we left it at four, it would end at the same time. We could put it at five so that it's the same timeframe as the master plan, although it's running about a year behind. Or we could do some other number.
Is this something we would want to look at, both of them? At this, each in the same year? Wouldn't we rather it be staggered?
Uh, I would say you would want it staggered mainly because of the workload.
Right, yeah, that's what I was thinking of.
Leslie, I'm, I'm also thinking that it, it should depend on the, the size of the project and the project because there could be a project come along that's gonna cost hundreds of thousands of dollars. And something like that, we might want to, plenty of time to plan for. So something like that, the tenure may be appropriate, or you, you may do a, a six-year plan with, uh, showing a tenure budget or something. I, I, I'm not sure, but I, I know there might be large projects that would require, um, more time.
Sure.
Yeah, there was, there was something. Sorry.
No, go ahead.
There, there was something towards the middle or later on in the document about a civic center. Is that like a real project we're thinking of building?
Uh, I think that was just a suggestion. So anything in here are merely suggestions to prod people into thinking about some things that people might want. So these would be examples of, you know, this is something you could do. Um, whether or not it's something we would actually do is, you know, for another discussion, but these are just to prod people on what sort of projects would be appropriate for a, um, capital improvement plan.
Okay, alright.
So none of this is set in stone. Uh, if it was, let's say, for example, if you were going to do a, um, civic center, which would be a, a large fiscal undertaking, that's gonna take more than five years to come up with this. Um, you could be in the planning stages and say, kind of like a long-term plan, that we're saving money for this, you know, we're putting it, you know, in these places with the anticipation of this, but that would be like long-term planning. So you'd have different stages of planning, would be my assumption within the capital improvement plan. So you're gonna have some that are near goal and some that might be, you know, 20 years, if this is available, this is what we would like to see. But we're putting these stages in process. So let's say if you said, oh, we need a community center, but first we needed to have, um, more structured infrastructure. Then you might be building that infrastructure over time in anticipation of that larger project.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, that does make sense. Thank you.
Okay, yep. So having the plan, at least to my way of thinking, having the plan so it's not way far out in the future helps you to, you know, look at the shorter-term goals as you're building towards the longer term. So you've got a long-term plan, in a sense, in your master plan. But this is looking at over the next block of time, what do we anticipate happening so that it's, everything's not hitting all at the same time?
Okay.
So then the question is, what is that period of time that you think would be most beneficial for something like this? So I'll give you an example to maybe put this into perspective. Let's say if you said, um, we want to encourage business growth. It was mentioned a couple of times in the plan. Do you want to have 15 businesses pop up all at once, or would you rather, you know, kind of space them out and, you know, have them, you know, gradually come and make sure that they're going to be sustainable and people will come to them before you flood your market? So that might be something to consider that you want to space out your growth.
And, and then the, the, the other thing that, that I was, um, had questions on Leslie was also the, um, the use, the useful life, because we, that's another place where we've got six and 10. Um, and I think it depends what it is. If it's a building or remodeling a building or something like that, well, of course, we'd want the useful life to be more than 10 years.
Right.
Yeah.
And then some things like equipment for the fire department, I don't know if not all of their equipment might have a useful life of 10 years due to technology changes or something. So maybe we can find a way to, um, a common sense way that to give flexibility in there without, um, um, getting rid of guidelines.
And I, I think that that was in there because it's not an absolute, like something has to last that long or something bad happens. But more to guide that it should be something that's going to be around and used for a long period of time, not something that's going to be useful for only two years because that would not constitute a capital improvement.
Okay, so, so that, um, that paragraph there is, uh, or am I, have I skipped ahead too far? Uh, I'm looking at what is Columbia Township's capital improvement policy? And we don't have a policy yet, so that's, I guess, some of the details we're hashing out, or?
Right, that's what we're trying to get to. You, you jumped ahead of us a little bit.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine. Um, but looking at, you know, what is this that, you're looking at this as a plan and knowing that this is going to be a tool to help to determine, let's say if you get 25 proposals, which ones are ones that are consistent with the master plan? And go into this planning process for how we're going to prioritize, et cetera. So we need to set some guidelines. So, you know, what is the timeframe that we're looking at and then looking at a policy? You know, how, how long should an object expect to be included if we're going to use capital expenditure funds for it? So like a ream of paper is not going to last you that, well, presumably isn't gonna last you that long. So paper wouldn't be considered a capital expense. It's a, you know, I mean, it can be expensive, of course, but it's not something that's, um, going to be staying around for a long period of time and used, but... So should we start with just picking a date and we'll make it consistent throughout and we can discuss changing it if we would like to?
Yeah, that sounds good.
On the schedule?
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay, so what date, what year would you like? Let's start with this.
You said the master plan is five years and we're in year two?
We're in year one, I believe, because we just passed it.
We're in year one.
Okay, so we're in the first
Oh, okay.
Six months of it.
And could I just throw this thought in there to remind everyone, this was, uh, I believe it's in the back of the planning training manual. But, um, it's a, it's a little, uh, thing from MSU. It says the forgotten law, um, that the planning commission reviews capital expenditures anyway, and they have 32 days to do so. Like, let's say the board says, uh, we're gonna build a, uh, stadium and, uh, it's gonna cost this much, blah, blah, blah. And then, then the, uh, planning commission would review it to see if it fits zoning, if it fits the master plan, all that kind of thing. So, uh, I guess my thought is it doesn't necessarily have to coincide with the, um, the years of the master plan. We don't want to make a, a capital improvement plan that's only three years because we only have three years left of our master plan before it needs to be reviewed. Because the master plan only needs to be looked at and see if it's still fitting the community's needs. It doesn't need to be changed every five years.
Right.
Right.
I hope I'm not... I hope I'm not like confusing us, but I just wanted to throw that in there.
So if we do this capital improvement plan for s- six years, then we'll be like a year and a half off of the master plan, right? And that way then we've got some, some update time built into if we need to make changes to the master plan, we've got we don't need to rush through it, because then we've gotta get that done so we can look on to reviewing the capital improvement plan. Does that make sense? Am I saying things that?
Well, I, I'm trying to understand how the capital improvement plan and the master plan. Uh, I, I know the capital improvement plan needs to reflect from the master plan, because it's supposed to be based on what the community would like to see. But I, I don't feel like that they're as married as, as we're thinking, unless I'm wrong. I, believe me, I'm no expert on this. I'm, I'm learning with everyone else.
No, I'm just thinking of just the timeframe, not the content, just the timeframe, so that we don't have two big projects on our plate at the same time.
Right, I would say either six or seven would be a good ballpark.
Yeah, that.
Yeah.
Alright, Anita, that makes perfect sense to me. I understand what you're saying now.
Okay.
Okay, so anybody have a preference?
Um, I do not. Six or seven sounds good.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Can you make it a range? Can you say six or seven, or does it have to be a specific?
No, it has to be more specific, you know.
Why don't we just go with um, six, since that was already in there?
That's what I was gonna say, let's do six since that was the first mention, and we'll just stick with that, and then we'll make it a consistent throughout.
Because if it's something that costs a million dollars or something, and, and it's going to take ten years to get the monies, it's just going to be added to the next, you know, uh, cycle of the capital.
Could it just be carried over? Yeah.
Okay. Um, looking through, uh, most of this, I think, was just um, wordsmithing. When we get down to the list of examples on what are capital improvement projects, remember that these are examples, not absolutes.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Um, and so that's um, in no way mutually exclusive either. I mean, it could be other things. And then it gives examples of what would typically not constitute a capital improvement, like we talked about, things that are not gonna necessarily last long enough for a major expenditure.
Right.
Okay, so then we get into the Columbia Township Capital Improvement Policy. And the um, amount given, which I think was relatively random, was twenty-five thousand dollars. Does that seem like a, you know, basically, so any, anything coming through for capital improvement would had to be, would have to cost at least twenty-five thousand dollars or more to be considered for a capital improvement project. So does twenty-five thousand dollars seem like an acceptable amount for the CIP policy?
Um, I think so. Just.
I.
Kind of a random guess.
Right, yeah. I think so, but I really, I, I don't have any idea how much anything costs ever, so.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to think of it from the public's point of view, and um, I wouldn't go higher than twenty-five thousand, um, just because that's a lot of money, and that's a chunk of change to spend at one time.
Um, yeah.
And it is something that, you know, we're, we're not like flushing cash. Um, it, the larger things we're gonna wanna plan for. So um, I don't know where that number came from, but I'd say that it's, it's pretty fair. It's not like it's, it's saying, okay, now you can go spend twenty-five thousand dollars on anything you want.
Right, I think.
Exactly.
It would have more to do with the um, budgeting and funding sources. So there's, you know, certain funds that are for capital improvements and certain funds that are earmarked for other expenditures.
Yes, yes. I, I believe so.
So I think that's where that would come in. So if, for example, some sidewalk needed to be replaced and the cost was less than twenty-five thousand dollars, then that repair could not be funded through the capital improvement.
Yes.
Okay. So that then takes us to the useful life. And do we wanna keep that at six or more years for the useful life of whatever's being um, purchased or built? Or is there a different number that seems to make more sense?
Well, I feel like the six or more years, the six years makes more sense when it's equipment. Um, services like computer programs or something like that, that, that is bound to to have a, a shorter useful life, but when it comes to buildings, I like the ten or more years.
Well, say that it typically wouldn't, would not include like small equipment, it would not include computer programs. It would be more durable goods.
Oh, wait, I'm, I'm reading that. I'm sorry, I'm reading that paragraph, and it specifically says any construction of or addition to a public facility. Or any addition to an existing public facility, which is twenty-five thousand or the useful life of six or more years. So let's say if we got uh, something done on bleachers at the ball field or something like that. I think we would want them to last ten years.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm just looking at some of the examples from earlier. A new fire truck. Construction of a township learning center. Creation of a dog park. Yeah, you would want those things to be around for at least ten years.
Good. So Dave, are you good with ten years?
Ten years sounds good.
Okay. Okay, so we're doing six-year plan, twenty-five thousand dollars, and ten years.
Yes.
Okay, then going down, more wordsmithing.
I've been scrolling around a lot. Where are you in the document?
Uh, let's see, I am on page. What are the benefits of preparing a capital improvement plan?
Oh, wait a minute. I'm on uh.
Okay.
Where are you, Leslie?
Um, about the middle of the page, it says, what are the benefits of preparing a capital improvement plan?
It's like page six.
Yeah, mine doesn't have page numbers on it. Oh, um, you know what, I'm looking at, wait a minute, you guys are on the one from the website, correct?
Well, actually, I'm just looking at the one.
Leslie emailed.
You guys are on the one from email?
Yeah, I'm on the, I'm on the.
Yes.
My, my copy that I marked up, and it's, I just added page numbers to mine so I could make it.
Okay, because we were just all on the same page. And.
We skipped, why a capital improvement plan for Columbia Township now? We skipped that paragraph.
Okay.
Or.
And.
Couple paragraphs. And then the next one is why the benefits.
What are the benefits? Okay, I'm with you guys.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, Dave, do you also see where we are?
Yep, I gotcha.
Okay. Um, as I mentioned in here, my reason that I was concerned about this list in particular, which can be switched in or out, is that by putting this here, it implies that these are things that we're not already doing. Um, for example, a prudent use of tax dollars. So by saying that the, we need the CIP in order to do, have a prudent use of tax dollars um, implies that we currently are not doing that. So I was somewhat concerned about putting that in, and maybe we can change the verbiage some to say it'd be a, you know, even better or something, but, you know, not to say that the uh, board members have been unwise with, you know, township funds. So wanted to be careful about how that was phrased, so as to not give the wrong impression about um, spending that's already occurred.
Right, you could say continued prudent use, if you wanna leave it in there.
Yeah, that sounds good. Cuz uh, yeah, wanna make sure that, that, that it's clear that anything out of the capital improvement plan that tax dollars will be used prudently, so there's no reason to take it out, but just make it clear that that's something that we're looking at for these projects, not, like you said, that we're not doing it already.
Right, so um, I can go through there again after we uh, take the markup out to make this easier to read. Um, and maybe come up with some additional words to make that a little bit more clear.
And maybe, maybe uh, could it be um, maybe a sentence or so instead of, I mean, I don't know, uh, the bullet points? What are the benefits? Um, I, I'm not even sure the purpose of this, I, of this paragraph. Um, I guess it's to the community to explain what the benefits of having a capital improvement plan is?
Yeah, I think it's to basically show that it is to, to be focused in the spending and improvements, rather than um, people thinking that they're just, you know, random willy-nilly decisions.
Yeah. Yeah, because there's no guarantee of prudent use of taxpayer dollars with any government, just because they've got a plan. So I, I don't know, I would say the, the benefit is to, is the pla- the actual planning. The um, you know, being able to get some things by um, seeing ahead and you know, y- you don't get a home by not saving money ever, and you know, that kind of thing, so.
Um, so I could include, for example, that growth is consistent with public preference. Things like that.
Yeah, so was recreation, um, you know, different things. Um, I, I like the promoting economic development, the generating key, community support by inviting public input. Which public input's always invited, but, yeah. Well, you, Leslie, you're a writer, I'm, I'm sure you'll, you'll get this.
Okay, I'll uh. Okay, then let's move on to the next page on the role of the planning commission and the CIP. And it doesn't appear that there were a lot of changes there. Um, there was a comment um, towards the bottom, and, and maybe this is my um, misunderstanding. The CIP is, of course, has some degree of being a living document, just as the master plan does. However, a plan is a plan, and so this is what we're looking at for the five years. So, to my way of thinking, other than having somebody submit an application for a project is not changing the plan. So while you would, you know, review it, as you're developing projects, I don't think you're going to change it. So let's say if you develop the plan for the next, what do we say, six years? And in that plan, you say, you know, oh, we're going to build a uh, gazebo with bleachers around a recreational area, and that's in there, that's something that the community has wanted. In year three, you don't take that out, you leave that in as you're, you know, developing projects, that this is kind of like the big picture of what we're looking to have. So I don't know that we would be changing it annually so much as, you know, reviewing it, but even then annually, it would be regularly as the projects are proposed.
Regularly is good. That um, annual update is um, earlier in there also, to pay, on the page before, it says something about annually updating.
Okay, so regularly reviewed, sounds like a good.
Better, mm-hmm, better wording.
Yeah, be- because what I, what I think my, what I, what I think will happen is, as the annual budget is done every year, um, this is going to be tied to the budget also. This will be part of the budgeting process. So it's going to get looked at, at that time. Um, so I don't know if you just call that review update.
Okay. I think that update assumes that you're going to change the document versus reviewing is, you know, seeing where you are, where you're going.
Yeah, to make sure everything's still kind of in line and, and you're on track with your goals and.
Okay.
I, I have a question in the paragraph before that. Um, the paragraph that starts the capital improvement plan is a dynamic planning document. And midway through that, it says that, oh, the Columbia Township Planning Commission is uniquely qualified to manage the development and regularly revisit the township's capital. That just, I, I don't know, that sentence sounds funny. Uniquely qualified to regularly re.
Yeah, I don't know why we're uniquely qualified, I guess because of our familiarity with the master plan.
Okay. Yeah, why are we uniquely? I, I just think the funny, that so sen- sentence is funny.
Yeah.
Right.
The town, co- planning commission.
Visit.
Will, or?
Hitting the township master plan.
But.
Why is it saying that we are qualified?
How about the Columbia Township Planning Commission will manage the development?
Yeah, that's, that sounds better. Uniquely qualified, that just, I read that like ten times. And understand that. It just didn't make sense. Now I've probably read it so many times, it's just.
And it's saying, based on our role in creating and updating the township master plan. Um, so.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe we need to um, ask the supervisor what exactly he meant, or um, maybe just tease this out a little more.
Yeah.
I mean, if you guys all think it's fine the way it's written, I'm, I'm good with it. It just struck me as funny, as odd.
Yeah, without an ex- explanation of what's, what constitutes uniquely qualified.
Well, and, and actually, what that whole, the, the intent of that whole paragraph, I'm not completely clear on. No, I, I mean, I don't quite understand what it means, and, and I want to understand it, of course.
So it's, it's, what is the role of the Township Planning Commission in the capital improvement plan process? So our role is to review the document? That's a lot of words to say that we're gonna review it.
Well, and.
And I don't really. Qualified, I'm on a commission, so I am, I am charged with the management of this document. So I.
Well, how about the Columbia Township Planning Commission is charged with the management of, I don't know.
Well, uniquely.
We could leave it at.
Kind of, kind of much, but when it comes down to it, I guess we are the people.
Uh, it, it could be what he means there is because a- as part of doing the master plan, you know, we, we had the meetings with the public, we had surveys and all that. But I believe that's something we're going to have to kind of do again for this, um, for this. Am I wrong there?
No, we do. We need to do another survey. A shorter survey, but still a survey. Okay, let's, we can wordsmith that a little bit.
Move on.
To um, be more clear. If you're okay with moving on.
Yeah.
I would like to say I, I really like that, the sentence, the first sentence in the second paragraph where it says. I would like to say I, I really like that, the sentence, the first sentence in the second paragraph where it says. The capital improvement plan is an essential link between planning for capital improvement projects and budgeting for them. That's a very nice.
Yeah.
It's very clear.
Okay, on the next page, which I believe is page eight, the Columbia Township overview. Um, I've never heard the term in re- with regard to Columbia Township in the Four Seasons Playground. Is that a thing that I'm just unaware?
I've not heard it. It sounds like Vegas.
Okay, so should we remove that since it's not actually a thing?
Yeah.
Maybe we could add that to um, our list of uh, capital improvement projects to turn this into Four Seasons Playground.
We've got boating in the summer, boating and swimming, we've got um. Snowmobiling in the winter on the trail, we've got in the fall bike riding on the trail and swimming and fishing.
Okay.
And then in the spring, we've got gardening, farming, and so, yeah. But yeah, it's not a thing, so. We could make it our new slogan though.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, it could be.
But I don't know, some people might take that to the wrong place.
Oh, let's see, I'm trying to see why I highlighted this um, at the bottom. Oh, um, right above the um, highlight was the. Population of twenty seven twenty, and I'm not sure where that name came from and who that is. Um, we could probably compare that to the numbers in the master plan. But I thought the number.
The, the news, the newest census?
Right, so I just want to clarify on that, whether it's residents, occupants, or voters. So just that we can be more clear on.
Oh, okay.
This is. So I'm assuming because it's a stable population, that it's year-round people. But I don't know if it's, you know, year-round occupants of any sort, if it's twenty seven hundred voters, we just need to find out who, who these people are.
Sure.
Um, throughout, or not throughout, in a few places, it um. The township needs to be capitalized, sometimes it says township, sometimes it says Columbia Township. Though that's probably interchangeable, but township needs to be capitalized.
Okay.
I made note of that in quite a few places, but that's something, as you're going through and updating it, that you just.
Okay.
Do a search for those or something.
And then that entire highlighted yellow paragraph, I, I feel like. Is that highlighted because the whole thing actually doesn't belong there, it's kind of out of. Context, isn't it, kind of out of place?
That might be why I put that there. I mean, why it was there, it wasn't.
Yeah.
Um. Well, that and we kind of talk about this, you know, rural outdoorsy nature and then. Compare it to a modern municipality, which doesn't seem like a. Necessarily a good match, unless you're fleshing that out in a different way, but.
Are you at? I'm sorry, wha- are we still back in the first paragraph?
No, I had jumped down to the second one where the public utilities, infrastructure.
Oh, yeah, that paragraph doesn't seem to belong there at all.
Yeah, so that just seemed out of place to me, but.
And it, that could have been a mistake, it could have been left from the source document or something, I'm not sure.
That could be. Okay, are we good so far with that? The other part of the Four Seasons Playground paragraph?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, um, in the principal land uses, I just wanted to double check the numbers and I didn't have the um. Master plan in front of me. Uh, there were some inconsistencies in the number, like for example, the numbers of lakes and the number of acres.
So those are just facts that need to be reviewed.
Yeah, they just need to be changed. Okay, so I think we're through the main, the main part of the body and then it goes into the maps.
Mm-hmm.
And of course, we'll want to put in the. The not draft future land use. I'm sorry, Dave, were you gonna say something?
That is an old map.
Yeah, the new map should have the uh, overlay going all the way down three eighty-eight.
Yeah.
Right.
So that should be updated to be not a draft map.
And then, oh, I'm sorry, Leslie.
I was gonna say, some of this information about the um, employment and population, uh, we could really just. Pull that straight out of the master plan because we did an extensive write-up there.
Yeah.
Um, because this is from the two thousand ten census and we had more updated information, I believe.
Yeah, we just, I, I think it's a good idea to, to just check all the data to make sure we've got it accurate.
Right. Okay, so then going down to the. Capital Improvement Plan. And I wasn't sure uh, why, and I think, Bev, you may have flagged this also, and when it was kind of switching into process versus plan.
Yeah, yeah, I did. Because I just thought that, that's a.
Um, the public act fifty-one, I think we need to include in an appendix. So that people could, who are interested could see what it states.
Yeah.
Um, because I know there's a lot of discussion about the uh, condition of roads in Columbia and what um, Columbia should or should not be doing.
Yeah, I agree that anything that we're referencing should be in there.
And then changing this to be the twenty-five thousand, the consistent with what we did earlier.
Right.
Reported. Although um. I'm, I'm trying to, so the capital improvement plan, i- it was overview. So the employment figures back up, the employment figures, I, I don't know where those ca- came from, so we'll, we're gonna double check that, correct?
Right.
And then the. The background here, I'm not sure what that second paragraph has to do. With. The first paragraph.
Um, my guess would be looking at. Because the roads are hot, such a hot topic, trying to address upfront that. Public roads are not a, something that would belong in a capital improvement plan, but because it doesn't. It's not under our jurisdiction, so I'm assuming that's why that's here.
Ported, oh, 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 okay, yeah, okay, yeah, I, now I understand it, thank you.
So the um, program areas, I liked the uh, the chart that was created with the different colors. Um, I'm not sure if those are all of the categories that we necessarily want to use. Um, and then I ran into some questions on the data collection, so I guess starting with the chart.
Well, I, I, so on the um. Okay, the Van Buren County Deputy Sheriff Facilities, I don't know about having that in there because we like lease the sheriff. We, we're not. The Police Department or the Van Buren County Deputy Sheriff. So I don't know why we would be planning for. Van Buren County Deputy Sheriff Facilities. And equipment, I, I know we provide the cell phone.
I think we also provide some space for them to um, office space and for a place for them to park the car. But a question might be, for example, should the purple and orange be combined into. Emergency services, and that's a category of capital improvement. Particularly because the sheriffs and the fire department often.
Yeah.
Share space.
Yeah.
So do we want to? You know, kind of think about this. Somewhat differently, so then, because I'm thinking in yellow, it's the township things, so it's like township, sports fields, et cetera. But then, even though the township owns it, if it was a sports field, would you want that to go in recreational areas?
Yeah, you, I think you would want it recreational, and then um, it like the bike paths, the pi- the bike paths are state-owned. If I'm. And if, unless there's something I don't know about them, so. Um, there's nothing that we do to the bike paths, although we might do something next to a bike path. So I, I'm not clear on that either.
I mean, there could be additional bike paths that we create somewhere else or that cross over or.
Okay, but, so wouldn't that still go under like a big, like a recreational type heading?
Right, so thinking about the different headings of. How we might break up this, if we had um, emergency services. Recreation.
Um, do you mind if I make a small comment as our fiscal person in the township?
Sure.
Um, fire EMS is one fund. Public safety is a separate fund. So it may not be a wise idea to combine them.
I, I've.
Just throwing that one out there.
Leslie, I feel like that it doesn't matter where their funding comes from, that'll get. It'll get funded in the right spot when it comes to budgeting time, I just feel like as a large, as a category. That's just like having the bike paths separate from a, a sport field, a ball field. Soccer field because we own that land.
Right, so I guess we're thinking, if we're looking at this.
These are program areas, not, not like spending areas.
Right, not like, you know, who owns it necessarily, so, you know, does it get treated, you know, does the recreation area get treated differently if it's a. County area versus. Somebody else's, which then might show, indicate that there was a preference for spending there because it was a county area, I don't know, but.
Well, I, I'm just not sure that the plan, like the program headings. I, I don't think that those tie anybody's hands when it comes to. Budgeting the money from the proper. Wherever the proper place is going to be.
Right.
But, but I feel like, okay, like the parks, the bike paths, trailways, sports fields. Should be all together, and then township-owned buildings and facilities. Well, yeah, I guess now we're kind of getting into. Semantics maybe because it's, a sports field, if the township owns it, is a facility, but it's also a park. If we own a trailway.
The, the yellow line there could be like for township business. The facilities, the storage buildings, then the sports field. Could be under the recreation, the transfer station is still part of township business. But the sports field would be. On the green line for recreation. I- am I thinking? The same? Does that make sense or no?
I think part of the issue is grants, because I know that there's um, a lot of discussion about grants to fund the various projects. So if we're looking at this from like a, you know, a big picture area and we want to say, okay, well, the community. Really wants growth in these areas, and let's say recreation is one of those areas. Um, maybe we basically then have subcategories of, you know, how that might be parsed out, parsed out, so who's. You know, for funding wise, I mean, I don't know. I don't know, because it's, you know, kind of became like everything, it's, you know, seems easy at first and then gets more complicated when you start digging down into it.
Right.
Well, a- actually, I, I guess it, it doesn't matter how we. Graph it, I guess this is just a chart, right? It, it doesn't, the, does the chart? Tie us to um, anything, I mean, does it directly correlate to? A rule, a policy, a funding source?
I believe it ties back to funding sources for grants.
Well, it. So then why is sports fields not with parks and recreation? Because I, I can't see someone giving a grant just because the township owns the field. Um, so I don't know, I don't know, I, I guess it's not uh. Something that I'm gonna tie us up all night over because I feel like it's, it's just a chart.
Is the um. The B, the B T P K T S, are those? There, there's. Is that something we came up with, or is that like? In the world of township business, that's what they're called?
Th- this could be something that came from the source document, I don't know, because I have no idea what BT stands for.
I'm assuming that's bike trail.
Okay, but then, but then in, in the, the text, it says bike path, so.
Right. Be better as recreation.
Um, I guess, let's um, just so we, I guess, don't get too po- bogged down into how this affects the financial aspect. Thinking about it from areas that we might want to include. Even if we wind up, you know, splitting apart the emergency services from public safety. But, you know, as we're thinking about where funds might go and where we might need projects. What sort of things might we want to include, so if we have the emergency slash, you know, public service, we have um, recreation. We probably want to have something for infrastructure, so thinking about, you know, if we decided we wanted to improve the look of downtown. The downtown area. By doing X, Y, and Z projects, you know, that might be considered an infrastructure project.
Yeah.
And, and the, like the sheriff and the fire, that, that could all go together under. Public safety as in Calamaz- like Kalamazoo. I mean, public safety is the fire department, public safety is the police department.
Yeah, well, since the, some of the grants are coming from the state level, it might be that they specify that it's. Fire versus sheriff or something, so that might be part of the issue is looking at. Where that money is coming from and if it's for a specific group when they're earmarking.
Okay, and I, and then the question on, on that one, on the deputy sheriff in particular. Um, I'm just wondering, if there were grants to be had. Are there grants that, for some reason, Columbia Township could get them, but not the Sheriff's Department?
I think for a lot of the grants, you have to have a capital improvement plan. Which is why we're going through this, is basically so that they are able to apply for grants.
Right, and, and I'm, so I'm wondering why the county is not doing that, I guess, that was my question.
Oh, that I couldn't say.
Okay.
I don't know.
No more comment, ma'am. Madam Chair.
Okay, um, other areas that you can think of. Besides the, you know, emergency, the two categories, recreation, infrastructure. Um, do we want to have some sort of like technology? Component, so there's been some discussion about uh, getting better um. Internet, et cetera, and so maybe there's an expenditure that needs to be had in order to improve technology out in this area. Is that something that we would want to include?
Well, could we call something like that? Do we want to call it technology, or how about um, public improvements, or I guess it's all public improvements? Well, I, I like what. Was that what you said, Anita? Was that what you said, Anita?
Yes.
It's hard when we can't see each other's faces.
Yeah, I know it. One day.
Yep.
Okay. So keep thinking on that too. And as we started thinking more about the plan, that might flesh itself out more.
Yeah, I think having an infrastructure one might not be a bad idea. Um, because I, I'm not sure about like, so you mentioned sidewalks. I'm not sure that that's township owned strip of land there, but it's something that the township might decide they want to do. So that would fall under infrastructure.
Yeah.
I don't know. Yeah, we'll think about it, right?
And I don't know if we were looking at supporting businesses coming in, if that would be something that would be, I mean, I don't know if there's something we could do with the capital improvement plan or not. So that might be just a horse of a different color. Okay, um, ready to move on for the moment at least?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. So then it starts going into the, um, forms. Uh, I was a little concerned about the I'm sorry, say that again?
You, on the data collection part, you have a lot of comments. Is that just details we need to get from someplace else?
Um, now looking at the the project rating form, I was concerned because it sounded subjective. And if we're rating projects, I'd rather see it be objective. So that it doesn't reek of, you know, preferential treatment, depending on who puts forth the project.
Um.
And Leslie, I, I want to, can we back up a little bit to the data collection? Because I think this may, um, be something that came from the source document. Um, because it said the standard forms used for data collection are found blah, blah, blah. At a meeting with the community, the capital improvement plans processed in the forums are explained in detail. Does that mean at a future meeting that is going to happen? Or was that the source documents meeting that already happened? Do, do you follow me?
Um, right. Well, presumably if somebody was, I guess if somebody was coming up with a project, they would present it in some way.
Said the information generated from these forms has been systematically compiled as the core of the capital improvement plan. So then it leads down to below. So maybe, um, maybe I'm not sure what my question is yet. That, that just I questioned if that was meant to be in here or not. That's all.
Well, your, Leslie, your comment there for that, um, next to last sentence is this is not true. The information generated from these forms has been systematically compiled as the core of the capital improvement plan. Your comment to that is this is not true. So
Right, because we don't have any forms. I guess it kind of, it reads as if we've collected data.
Yeah.
Which we have not.
So maybe we need to change the, the tense. Maybe we can change the tense of it, um, and that will make it make more sense of, um, so these forms will be this and they will be that.
As like, this is the, this is our process for carrying out things that have to do with the capital improvement plan.
Yep, we can, I can play with that.
Okay.
Okay, um, going down to the project rating form on the next page. The when we look at the forms themselves, um, I'd like to see them be um, objective or either that or they need a committee oversight. So not one person is deciding who has a higher ranking than another. So it might be that in the form, if you have a health or safety, that that's a ranking, but it's not subjective. It's either a health and safety issue or it's not. So it's not that somebody makes the determination.
So Leslie, how did you get to the forms?
I think they're at the very back.
So we're, we're not going through the document. We're going to the forums because that's what the last paragraph referred to, correct?
Right. So Clear, nobody else has the forums because that was not included in the file that was uploaded.
Okay, so it's not on the website. I don't have them either. And I don't have my email open.
I guess I don't have it here either. I was thinking I did. So I don't have forums.
Okay.
Well, we can keep working on the text.
Yeah. So we'll keep working on the text. There are draft forms, but they're not here.
Okay.
In capital facilities.
Yeah, I just went through the whole thing. They're not attached.
Okay. But in any case, in order, in, for the purposes of uh, transparency and fairness, we'll want to spend, want to make sure that however they are um, scored, that it's a fair scoring system.
Agreed.
Okay. So I guess moving down to the chart, the green chart.
Yeah.
Um, I didn't understand.
Honestly, I didn't either. I mean, I just couldn't quite wrap my head around it at the time. So I'll, I can put some more time into that and see if we can make it so it's a little bit clearer. You better, I just have a put in head tonight.
And I, and I think, I think some of that is from the source document also. And it might need to be tweaked a little bit.
Okay. Yeah, we can give it a little thought.
Kind of grid of how the whole process works. First, you, first you have these policy documents and it covers these types of projects. And then you process the project and get public input and then it goes to here and to here and to here. And get a resolution. All right. So we'll skip that part.
Yeah, I'll just skip it for now.
Okay.
Okay. So then there is a extensive list with lots of information about the um, public or the township holdings.
Yeah.
I don't know that the Cal Haven Trail. I don't think that that's actually a, I think it's a benefit to Columbia. I don't know that we can claim that as something that we maintain.
Yeah, I agree.
Oh, yeah. Cool bridge, though.
It was.
It's gone? That's not there anymore?
No, I meant the picture was cool. I assume, I assume it's still there.
Yeah, it's still there.
Fifty-one and a half and fifty-two. Might have to go look for it. It's neat.
Okay, then there's a map of some of the assets.
Response vehicles in nineteen eighty-six? That's unbelievable. That's old.
Okay, the township lakes that was taken straight out of the master plan. Then there's a map. It's a nice map showing where the different lakes are. Uh, let's see, can we go down to the senior services in the library? Is everybody on that page?
Yes.
Okay.
I was kind of surprised to see we pay a hundred thousand for the library. There's probably about three people in the township that have library cards.
And I'm one of them.
Well, I am too, but.
Um, and, and that's, that's homeowners and I feel like that doesn't belong there. That's not something we can argue, I don't believe. Um, I mean, we don't want to have our own library as, as far as I know. I know someone did once and, and I know that many people were against of it, it, against it, including some current board members. So I don't know. Uh, but I, I, I guess I don't understand why that's there. What does that matter to our capital improvement plan?
My, my guess would be that it's there to um, basically earmark that we should have more, basically that that could be a potential for a future improvement. So that maybe there is some discussion of having more facilities for senior services and having a, I know that there's in board meetings in the past, there's been discussion about having a library now so that there could be free internet like you can at the other library locations.
But first they would need internet.
Oh, true, but.
It doesn't matter if it's free, if it's no good and you can't connect. But yeah, so I just questioned why, why that was in there. Um, I, I don't, uh, I don't understand why that's in the plan.
Okay. So is that something you think we should remove?
Well, I, I, I wanted to discuss it because I, I feel like I'm not sure why that's in there. Uh, you know, our
Right, it's not
I know we collect forty-eight thousand in taxes for senior services. That's the millage that the voters approved. So I, I don't understand what this is leading to or what the point is. That's we can't uncollect those taxes because the voters approved that millage. As far as I know, we can't undo that.
Right. That would be up to them to decide not to vote for it next time, if that was their choice.
Yeah. And, and that would have nothing to do with our plan. So I just didn't understand what I, it's there, that's all. And, uh, there could be a, a good reason and I just don't get it.
Well, what heading are we under right now?
I think we're still under the services that are available and owned by Columbia. So if we went through all of the um,
Yeah.
the buildings and the fire equipment and then the lakes. And then ambulance, and then there's senior services in the library. So these are things that are not located within the township, but township residents do have access outside of the township.
So again, back to what Bev said, what does this have to do with the capital improvement plan? All three of those topics, ambulance services, senior services and library.
Well, I, yeah, I, I feel like the way they're presented is not, these are the services we have. But hey, these are the services that we have that we want to replace with something else. Uh, I'm, I'm just not sure that this belongs.
Okay, well then we can
Because it's not anything anyone's proposed yet. Because we don't even have a plan yet to propose projects.
Right.
Um, so I don't know, I
You're just proposing, this isn't even saying we need this or we want this. It's just saying this is what it is.
Yeah. And, oh, okay. So like with the library, if you just want to stick with the facts, um, the, the county levies X amount for access to the library and it says where there's access at, how many miles away they are. Um,
But what does it have to do with this?
Say how many township, how many residents have library cards because does, is that relevant?
And that's a moving number.
And, and does it matter? I mean, the service is the library. However, it's, you know, we paid this much for it and it's located six to twelve miles. We don't need to say how many residents have a library card. Because for one, I, I don't even know if we can find that out, but, but I don't see where, how, why it matters.
Right.
Unless you're arguing a case for something. So, and is this document meant to do that or not? I don't know. So again, I'm learning with you guys. So that's why things like this I bring up for discussion because I don't, I don't understand. And, um, I'm not sure that all, any of us do. And that's what we're here to do is to make sure that we're guiding this in the best possible way if we're going to put our name on it.
Right.
So what do you guys think?
Uh, it certainly does not appear to belong there.
Yeah, it, it does sound like it's a little bit snarky. I don't know if it, if it needs to be or not, but I think the snarkiness could be removed.
Yeah, I agree with that because this is going to be a public document. It's going to be out there a while and, and, uh, and we just want to stick with the facts of what it is and, and we don't need to color it any at all.
I was looking at the one about the ambulance. And maybe if somebody was proposing, we have our own ambulance service, then maybe that would be relevant. So maybe, I don't know. I don't know.
And that, that's how I felt. I felt like it was leading to that. It, it sounded leading to me. And as a taxpayer, I'm thinking, hey, I know we're not going to pay for this within the budget. So I, I feel like, does it belong in the document or is that a case for, um, the supervisor or whoever, um, would want to propose this? Is that a case that they should make at that time when they propose to put like ambulance services in the plan? I don't know.
How about if we make it less snarky, but keep the ambulance services since we do have the, um, the emergency medical workers that are paid through Columbia. So that is something that we're specifically doing outside of ambulance service. But maybe we want to remove the senior services in library since those aren't something that we are directly hosting.
You know, having any control over it anyway. Yeah.
Right.
And that makes sense.
Okay. So we'll work on de-snarkifying that a little bit. It's a new word for the night.
Great word.
Thanks. Uh, so there was just some miscellaneous commentary here. About the part in yellow about our seniors want to have a place to go local instead of twelve miles away. Also seems kind of snarky and out of place.
I'm sorry, I'm backing up to to get the broad overview. So we were still under capital facility. So actually you're correct, Leslie, tho- those, um, I mean, no surprise there. But, um, they don't belong there because they aren't our services. And then under the ambulance, um, the, um, the crew that we're doing that, that does belong there.
So we'll just fix it up a little.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're under the executive summary. Um, looking at the twenty twenty-one projects. Um, most of those would not meet the definition of capital improvement projects according to what was outlined above at the twenty-five thousand dollar mark.
Yeah. And, and we, we don't have any twenty twenty-one projects because uh, oh, project histories. Okay, they're just talking about past projects that haven't because there was no capital improvement. There is no capital improvement plan in place yet. So these are, this is talking about things that have just been in our budget.
Right, that, that were paid fully out of the Columbia Township budget without the eight, any grants or outside sources.
Yes, okay. And yeah, some things do need to be removed because like the election voting machine, I mean, first of all, I, I believe I remember that grants did pay those back. Um, because that's why we, as a board member, we voted on approving them. I, I do remember that, but it does fall under that amount.
Right.
So we would just.
If I can just chime in for a second here because I do see some of these numbers are not correct. Just any numbers that you guys have in here that are related to accounting, someone needs to reach out to me before you guys publish this.
Okay. We'll clean it up and I'll send it to you. Before it goes out into the, uh, the big public.
Yeah, that, that makes a lot of sense. And then removing the small ones.
Okay, so let's see, moving to future projects.
And there's some, um, work needed to be done on the, um, the phrasing there too. Suggest that there are many projects in which, that there are, we're missing the word are.
Where are you located?
On, uh, under future projects, the first sentence. Review of the project summary worksheet found in the appendix of this report suggests that there are, there should be the word are.
Good.
Which the township would like to engage. There's another missing word. And
The part that's highlighted.
It's kind of a clumsy, um, maybe the whole thing needs a little tweaking there, Leslie, that whole, um, paragraph.
Yeah, I think once, um, once we get to the stage of taking off the markup, it'll be easier to then go through again because otherwise there's like so many things popping up everywhere. It becomes difficult to see where it starts and ends.
Yeah, I agree.
So we'll definitely go through another cleanup. The highlighted part I'm assuming is talking about, although I wasn't sure, um, if for example, there was a um, let's say if you needed a office built for the, I don't know, for the sheriff's office. And it made the most sense to, you know, add it with an addition onto the township hall or whatever. Um, it's two different areas that are combining for a potential cost savings is what I'm assuming that that's talking about. How that influences budgetarily, I don't know if it's split between two different um, project types.
Where are you at, Leslie?
Uh, second paragraph of future projects.
Um.
It says also in the future, other projects such as new facilities.
Future projects, um, oh. Can be studied too. And somewhere else in the document, they, they, it did mention, and I believe it was one of the bullet points that says why have a capital improvement or what's good about having a, one of those paragraphs earlier mentioned this where you might overlap to, um, different areas to share costs on a project. Which like you just said, like say you were going to add on to the township hall and you want a place to park the sheriff's um, squad car. Um, so you would combine those two projects and share costs.
Right, so that makes sense. I just don't know how the the details would work out. So I would need somebody like Christie to, you know, get more into how those funding sources work and if that's allowable, which I'm assuming it is, but I don't know how that works.
Savings. Future other projects such as new facilities can be studied to determine if combining operations. Actually, instead it can be studied, should be studied to determine if combining operations can realize a cost saving. That should be a should, not a can.
Right, because it makes sense.
Is beneficial to officials and grant writers to include a list of tentative future projects in order to identify the need for grants and other funding opportunities. Wonder what other funding opportunities are. I understand grants as a funding opportunity. Maybe I'm just not reading that with a broad enough mind right now. It's been a bad, long day.
Whi- which part are you on now?
Um, other funding opportunities. I was just wondering out loud what what that means. Other funding opportunities. Because to me, an opportunity is like a grant. It's something that comes your way that is not normally out there as a, as a tool. I'm just thinking out loud and I should probably stop right now.
I don't know what the other opportunities would be, but I'll assume that there could be others.
And it's nice to have it in there because then, you know, you have an option. If, if something comes along that's not a grant, that's just an other funding opportunity, we could still take advantage of it.
Right?
Yeah.
Could be a gift or something.
Yeah, or you know, I don't know if we have any, you know, or if like people do like, you know, land gifts or whatever.
Yeah.
And so then if you sold it, I mean, I guess that would be additional money that you weren't anticipating or maybe you use it to build on for something. So that could be a funding, other opportunity.
So funding this. CIP may have projects that are delayed, deferred or canceled due to our lack of funding. While each project will have an identified also dependent on a on a expenditure. So there's a sentence here that's got, um, um, many projects list funding sources from state and federal grant programs. Those grants may not yet be secured. Oh. Now that I read it out loud and just read the black letters, I'm good.
Um, it's so are these, it's the graph, it says that graph, overall funding graph goes there. Are these graphs we already have or graphs that we will need to be created?
That's a, I'm assuming that's a graph that will be created. I don't believe that was included here.
So I think there's some others later on that we would have to create, I guess.
Yeah, we can look at that once we, I mean, I'm assuming we have to have some data and get some feedback for, so.
Okay.
Oh yeah, and it, it refers to figure three, two above. And I don't.
Yes, that's off. Some of the labels were just off.
Yeah.
Those are the things that get fixed when you're, when you've actually got the graph to put in there. Review it again.
Oh, three, two is listed, well, it's not shown, but listed below. So I don't know, some, uh, missing graphs that we'll have to put in. Uh, some figures that need updating. On the bottom of page twenty-six, it's talking, it's highlighted, um, the township will have its first public safety building. That will cost two hundred thousand dollars.
Where is that?
Bottom of page twenty-six.
Okay, because I'm still seeing some missing numbers. Okay, and, uh, I don't, what's the heading, Leslie? I don't have page numbers.
It's after where it says graph here, figure three, three, public services.
Figure, okay, the township will have that will cost two hundred thousand dollars to place public safety on the business road.
Yeah, that second sentence is in a sentence.
Well, and I wasn't clear if it was referring to the this, uh, station two as the public safety building, which has already been built, or if it was referring to a building that is planning to be built at some point in the future.
Or is this from the source document? It doesn't apply to us at all.
No, no, I think that's something, that's an idea that, um, someone may have. But I don't, it's so I don't know what, it's an idea. So I don't know at what point ideas go in the plan. It's not anything that's a thing yet. And it, it's not anything that, um, coming from the public that I know of. So I don't know.
Yeah, like a lot of this belongs.
Yeah, right, right.
Okay, well, how about I'll just mark it for now as it's an idea and we'll decide where if anybody.
Yeah.
This. Um, the next highlight, it looks like it's also an idea about a new pumper tanker that's needed.
And also the newly generated emergency to provide coverage during times where it is low requires more funding than the revenue provided by the current millage. So, uh, yeah, I don't hmm. Things to think about because I.
Yeah, see, these sound like things that are are ideas for, to, to utilize our capital improvement plan to facilitate the construction of the township's first public safety building and the pumper tanker. And then here's the civic center for eight million dollars.
Now that doesn't belong in there at all. I'm sure that's, uh, from the source document, but so like a pumper tanker, we know that the fire department, one day, I don't know when, how soon, they are going to need a new truck and it is going to cost a whole lot of money. So it is something to be planned for. And, and that's pretty much a given that if we continue to have a fire department, they're going to need trucks. Because our departments use fire trucks. Now, the public safety building, however, that's a vision. You know, that, that's somebody's vision right now, but the, the, um, the fire truck thing, that, that's the real deal. That's, I'm sure it's in the fire department's plan somewhere that they've got to have this truck eventually and, and they may even know what year they need it by. I, I'm not sure. But that is a big chunk of change for them and, uh, they will need to plan for it. And that facilities, that whole, uh, paragraph needs to come out of there. That, that's from the source document.
Okay, so take out the civic center?
Yeah, that's from like Ann Arbor or something like that. Nothing like our community. We wish we had eight million dollars for the township office, right?
Oh, there you go. Pretty spiffy.
No, if we had eight million dollars, we could do better than an, uh, township office, right?
Okay, so let's see. I know everybody's getting, uh, towards the end of their meeting time and.
Yes, at brain time.
And then it gets, goes into some various examples at the end. So how about in the interest of time, now that it's eight forty? If, um, I'll go ahead and make the changes as we've discussed, we can take off the markup, although uh, maybe leave comments in that are still necessary to address. And we can give this another read through.
Yeah, a- and, uh, I would check internal services. I would check that with the, uh, the clerk.
Okay.
Check that, that paragraph maybe.
Okay, yeah, we'll go through this again. Okay, so we'll have that continue on to next month.
Pretty big document.
Yeah.
A lot of information.
It's a big one and it's an important one too. It, it's very important. So we want to, you know, do it right as, as right as we can.
Okay, so moving on to the special land use provisions for adult group and childcare group. And we had discussed this last month and then so Tasha provided the, the verbiage. So recall that last month we talked about, um, some homes are allowed by right. And so we were looking at for the uh, larger homes, what, where would be allowed and would it be allowed anywhere? So this is what she has provided.
So that, that's like a four by four sign she's allowing, right? Or a two by eight, sixteen square feet. You can divide that up. Two by eight or four by four.
Roughly a four by four, is that right?
Yeah.
Well, this looks good to me. I don't see any glaring problems.
In the new commercial overlay, okay. In the new commercial overlay, okay. Should we have a so if, if a copy of the state license is sent to the zoning administrator, would there also be a copy on file at the office? I think that would be a good idea.
What would the zoning administrator do with it? Wouldn't she just file it at the office?
Yeah, maybe we could just ask her that. It probably doesn't need to be written into here anywhere. But I agree with Dave, I think it's got everything we discussed.
And you can always look up licenses online through Laurel.
That's true.
Okay.
But they should still, I think they should still provide it.
Yeah, I agree.
I can look up the teachers, teaching certificates online, but we make them provide a copy to me.
Yeah, certainly makes it clearer.
Yeah.
So do you want it to say in the ordinance that it has to be provided to the clerk, or do you want to just talk to the Z A and have them do it? If you ask for it, to go to the clerk specifically, it's part of the ordinance, otherwise you're.
No, I, I guess keep it with, with the zoning administrator, because they've got to contact her anyway. And then we'll just ask Tasha to, to, you know. I, I'm assuming that the township has copies of everything she approves anyway.
And we need to ask Tasha if she would, if she keeps the copy. Does she keep, does she need to keep that, or can she just be the gatherer of the information and then she files it in the township office?
Yeah, yeah, and I just see that as a housekeeping thing, not anything that should hold up these.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, then is there a motion on this?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we accept this as it is written.
I'll support. Oh, go ahead, Anita.
No, you said, you go.
Okay, I'll support that motion.
Okay, so to clarify, Dave is motioning to accept the special land use provisions for adult group and childcare group homes as presented and seconded by Anita, correct? Any discussion? Okay, then we'll do a roll call.
Hey, no, I'm sorry, I'm going to stop you guys for just a minute, because I don't think that's legal.
What?
We can't just accept this, it's a, it's a zoning amendment. So you are, you have to reword that to say that you want to move forward with the hearing next month. If you're going to have a hearing on it to amend the ordinance.
We're not doing it next month, we're doing several at a time.
Okay, so then you need to amend the ordinance to say that you're approving this for a future hearing.
Okay, but we still have to do a roll call vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so Dave, do you want to reword your motion?
I make the motion that we accept this as written for review and a public hearing sometime in the future.
Okay, and Anita? You still want a second? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move to roll call more legally. Dave?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
But Anita?
Yes.
Leslie, yes, okay, so we'll move that to a future hearing. Okay, then let's go to the discussion of the accessory building and the amended text. And there has been quite a bit of discussion about the issue of the pole barn, storage barns. There had been some discussion also about people wanting pole barns in the area, and they may or may not have property that was adjacent. And so one idea that came up was if people did not have adjacent property as we are requesting, well, then this proposed ordinance change, should we let people come forward under a special land use to explain why they have, are seeking property for storage that's not adjacent to property that they own?
I think that sounds fair, because it really doesn't make sense. I have a friend that has a piece of property that's a quarter of a mile away from his home, and he would like to put a barn on it, but he's been told he can't. And it really doesn't make any sense why, because he just wants to store a tractor in it, because he's trying to put in a little orchard. You know, like a little hobby orchard, so it doesn't really make sense that you have to have build a barn on an adjacent piece of property that you own. Maybe there's other things behind that that I don't understand.
So I, I think it, in some instances, it, it might depend on what they're doing, the size of the lot. So I'm assuming that he owns farmland somewhere if he's putting in a little orchard.
He bought a two acre plot to play around on in his retirement.
Which isn't very big.
No, but, but. He just wants to put a.
Yeah.
Small little barn up. He's just playing around. He's not going to junk it up. But I, I just, so I don't understand in the, in the whole big world of having to have your property adjacent to build, to build a barn. If I wanted to buy a piece of property half a mile away from my home and put a barn on it and put cattle on it, I can't do that, because you can't put a barn on a vacant piece of land.
Well, you could do that, because that would be ag. That would be a different.
Ah, okay, so it's not, it's not ag for my friend's little hobby plot of land?
Well, it sure seemed like it, but.
Maybe he didn't present it that way, it's entirely possible, but, but back to the, to the wording of the of the stuff here. I, I don't know, I mean, I could be completely out of line, and there could be issues that I don't know about. I understand you don't want just every plot of land throughout everywhere, just having a barn on it, and nobody's there, and then it, you know, can get run down, which that can happen if people live there or don't.
Or they, it, it's more like they, they put a garage, it's not necessarily a barn. They put a garage and, and they, they live there, or they have a garage on a so let me give you some real life instances, and I, I'm not saying for or against, I'm just things that, that we need to figure out how we can, you know, do the right thing for everybody without making it a free for all, so that there's a couple things that I can give for, for instance. Someone owns a garage on a lot that, you know, it's already a done deal, it was there from forever, and it's a very small lot, it's like forty, a hundred foot deep, maybe a hundred foot wide, something like that. And they regularly shoot there. So where are they shooting at? Are they shooting into your property, the neighbor's property? They're not shooting straight up in the air. That's just one instance. Another instance is somebody builds in, they moved into a, they've got like a storage container hooked onto their mobile home and being utilized like living space. Another one, they've got several storage containers, and they overfill it with stuff, and the stuff ends up outside. There is somebody on Craigslist right now selling very small pieces of the property that the township is having trouble for selling at even four hundred dollars a lot. He's selling them for seventy-five hundred dollars on contract, three hundred dollar a month payments to people who are just looking for a little piece of land somewhere. So, you know, I, I understand why people, they've got land, they want to build something on it, they might want to store their, whatever their, their vehicles and four-wheelers, tractors, anything. But we just need to do it in a way that works for our average, regular decent citizen, but somehow deters the others that make the township not as nice a place to live as it could be.
There's people that live on crappier plots already. There's, there's houses on my road that are, are an embarrassment to drive past. So how is that? I, I understand that that's going on, and we can't fix that, but.
Because the reason that they're there is because at the time that they were built, that was completely fine. It was okay to have a fifty foot by hundred foot lot or smaller, because there was no zoning, there was no planning, so we're supposed to be planning. Now, I'm not saying that we have to not do this, or, or, you know, not allow pole barns at all. What I'm saying is we need to be mindful because we are planning and we want to not create tomorrow's problem. So we don't want the township to be a township of just pole barns, so we want to I, I don't know how, but somehow we need to put something in there, so maybe owning another, maybe if they're owning a home in the township. But then you're excluding people who are buying some acreage in the township. And maybe don't have a home, so I don't know.
So then like, what Leslie just said, then if somebody wants to build something that's not adjacent, then they need to get a special land use, and they just need to explain what they're doing and why? Is that what you were saying, Leslie?
Right, so we would say, you know, if you've got an adjacent parcel, it would be by right, and you don't have to come before the commission. But if you're just buying, let's say you just bought this parcel of land, and you decide you want to put up a pole barn, because maybe you've got a boat, you want to store a camper or whatever. You know, you just need to come forward and explain, you know, what it is that you're doing, and that you're not going to live in it, and, you know, restore your camper in it, and, you know, live in your camper all year, you know, whatever. So that at least there's some oversight.
What do you guys think about treating different zones differently? So I'm just putting this out there for discussion, so the one that we already have written up, does that make sense for the lake areas, because they are so condensed, they're, they're already so populated? Or, or do we just want to do this special use on everyone, regardless of what zone they're in? Whether they're in the R one, the R or the, the ag?
So what you're asking, if you live on a lake or you live in a lake area, then you can have a piece of property someplace else, and?
No, 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 I'm, I'm saying the one that we did, the one where, where we were saying you have to have an adjoining lot, we were thinking of specifically the lake area for that one, because what was happening there is since they weren't allowed to build a storage building, then the ones who have a lot of money, they would, they just built it as another residential with storage underneath, so then you've added more people, more septic, more use to an area that's already pretty dense.
So I was like, I thought that this proposal that we have here in front of us was for the lake areas, and it wasn't for the entire community.
That's what, what I was thinking also, but I, I think in our discussion, it may have got expanded, I'm, I'm not sure. I, I thought it was targeted for the lake area, so maybe it needed to be clear, and can we do that? Can we do something based on the zone, and I, I think we.
I think we can.
Well, I think it definitely needs to be clarified, because the way it's written, it's for the entire township.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, because just for my two cents, I know people would love to put a pole barn out here, so they would have a spot where they can bring their clods and their guns and their fireworks, then come out on the weekend, just go crazy. Because they think this is just a garbage area full of garbage people that don't matter. Go home on, you know, Monday morning, and we had to put up with them all weekend. So there's a real reason not to allow just a barn out here. I.
This is targeted, the, the lake areas. In my friend's specific instance, he lives on a lake, and his property is not on a lake. So if you're saying this applies to lake areas, no, because then that's adjacent.
No, no, this, this wouldn't take care of, of that situation, so that would be more like Leslie's proposal of doing it as a special land use, and he's a guy who lives here, and he comes and he says, I want this permit to build a pole barn, because I got this property over there. I'm growing stuff on it, and I want to put my tractor there. You know, that's different from someone saying, I bought this lot off of Craigslist, and I want to come out and just party on the weekends, although, I don't know, they've got the right to do that, too, so. This is a tricky one.
Now, that's special land use, I would be cautious, because that, that building will be there forever, when somebody sells that property. You know, the new person might not want to have a, an orchard, they might want to have a racetrack. I don't know if we can police that. And you go, you know, what do you want your community to look like? Do you want it to be a place for people to come out here and go crazy on the weekends?
And that's part of the problem that we have right now, is our, our ability to even keep up with enforcing the, you know, the, what we have on the books.
Yeah, so we, we should be real cautious about trying not to make this worse.
Well, what if they have a home in the township?
And then they can come out next to my house and go crazy for the weekend?
Well, I'm, I'm, so what I'm thinking is if they have a home in the township, they live here, they, they're not going to treat it like that, they're more likely to be someone who really does just need to put something on that property. Like the guy who wants the orchard.
Yeah, his orchard is, you know, like ten trees.
It's still an orchard, it's still ag, he might be able to get away with it.
Also, are you saying that if the person or if the property is an ag, then they shouldn't, that basically they should be allowed to build it by right? Is that what I'm hearing?
If it's for agriculture.
Well, and that, to me, that depends on the lot size. What if they bought one of those quarter, quarter acre or less lots, and, and it's in the ag district? You know, I mean, somebody just sold a tiny little lot over here in the ag district, and we've got people living in a camper there for the last year, so across the road from the other camper there, so, you know, it's, I don't know.
So maybe we're thinking that there should be a size, like a minimum size in order to build a pole barn?
Maybe something like that, because.
There was something in here. I thought we talked about that last time. I don't have my, my notes from last time. I don't have my, my notes from last time, last meeting. Didn't we, didn't we talk about that? You have a specific size. Something or other.
Building lots, yes.
Is that different than what we're talking about?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Okay.
That, that would be for like building a home.
I mean.
I hate to be the cranky old man, but I see a real problem of letting people just build a, a building out here in the sticks. Unless they're really going to do some kind of an ag thing with it. Which means they're gonna have to have. You know, blueberry property or something.
Well, you could have property in the ag and just because you enjoy the. Decent quiet and you wanna have your. Um, star viewing equipment out there, I mean, I don't know.
Can we do, uh, I'm sorry, um, Leslie, could, could we? Can we like have a homework assignment where we each? Find another municipalities?
I think that's a, a good idea to look, you know, each of us look into this deeper and Tasha should be back. Next month, so maybe we can get some more clarity, so why don't we postpone this discussion? And we'll.
And why don't we each look at a commu- at, at a community and maybe look at a community that. We aspire to be, you know, and, you know, a nice. Well-run community that's rural like ours and, and how do they handle? This, and maybe even take a drive and. Look at that community and. I don't know, I, I, I just feel like some homework is in order because it's an important one to get it right. And, and we can't like tell people that you can't do anything. Because you live here, but at the same time, we won't, we don't wanna give the message of, yeah, come here, everything gets all up for grabs.
Yeah.
Right.
Hey. All right.
Does that sound?
Yeah, I think that sounds reasonable. Okay, so to be continued. Anybody aware of any other, um, old business? If not, let's move to reports. Uh, Tasha's zoning administrator report is attached. Uh, is there any ZBA report?
No report.
Okay. Yep. Township board member report?
Um, I don't really have a report, I just, uh, for anyone who did not, um. Zoom in to the, uh, the township meeting, we, um. Had, um, a, a lively meeting with a lot of, um, first time guests. Uh, we do have a, um. Someone in the township who has property for sale and they've been approached by. Um, um, someone who is a marijuana investor in, uh. Other townships and they're asking for things that. Are already against our ordinances. They want an outdoor grow and they want a class that we don't allow. So. Basically, that's just, uh, for your information. Um, I don't know if they'll be bringing anything. To the township again or, uh, approaching Tasha with trying to do. A special land use, but. I- it's nothing that they asked for was allowed in our ordinances, so. And that's the only thing that has anything to do with zoning. That I recall from the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Well, let's see, at this time, I would like to open public comments at nine oh seven. Please keep your comments to three minutes, are there any public comments at this time?
Um, I do wanna state that it was brought to my attention that folks that are clicking on the video link. On the website to view. The meeting will not have a chat box there to provide public comment. So, in the bottom left. Of the screen, you will see a public comments section with a link. Um, you can click on that link and provide a public comment and it will be read. Um, if you don't see that link right now, refresh your screen and it will show up.
Christie, can you, um. Just in case, can you tell people how to refresh their screen?
Everybody's is gonna be just a little different normally, it's a little circle. That looks like this what I'm hovering over right now. You would click on that.
Do we have, uh, the telephone option also for public comments?
Yes.
In case they can't, um, get through.
Yes.
That way.
It looks like Karen has her hand raised.
She can go ahead and, go ahead and talk, Karen.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, just a couple of things from the beginning of the meeting, uh. There was a communication that was received. About a neighbor and concrete. And because she lives between me and that, uh, the person who sent the correspondence. I'm quite sure she just put in a paved driveway, so that's the concrete that I'm aware of. Um, on to the other things. I appreciate all of the discussion you guys had. And I also see how difficult this project is for the capital improvement plan. And I almost think you were given too much information by. It maybe would have been easier if you started with just the source document and filled in the blanks yourselves. Because I think it was Beverly said, at what point do ideas go in the plan and I think in this case. All the ideas were already put in there, so now you're having to backtrack out and. So whatever, it's a tough job, so I appreciate all the work you guys are already starting on. And I'm really glad you're not just rubber stamping it because it obviously needs quite a bit of work. And, um, that you're willing to go through and. Not just clean up, de-snarkify as you say, and verifying stats, so. It's just more and more, uh, apparent how much work there is still to go, so I'm really. Uh, grateful that you guys are doing that. Um, and at this point. The examples of the ideas, I thought a lot of that was supposed to come up through the public. Not to say that the township officials wouldn't also have some, uh. Input of course. But maybe a starting point is more like the last survey that was already done through the planning commission. Um, to, just for starters and then build from that. Because the other thing it sounds like is you can have. The six-year plan, it sounded like you settled on, but couldn't you still amend? And add or subtract occasionally? Just as you can for the master plan, so it's more questions, but definitely a lot of thanks to you guys.
Thanks, Karen. Do we have other public comments?
Marsha? Just to clarify, um. If anybody wants to dial in, the number is three zero one. Seven one five. Eight, five, nine, two. And the meeting ID is nine, nine, six. One, zero, zero, five. Zero, six, five, seven. Um, the link to provide public comments is. Bit dot ly, so bit.ly, B I T, dot L Y slash. Three, lowercase, lowercase T as in Tom, uppercase C as in cat, six. Uppercase G as in George. W, U. All uppercase those last three.
We have a comment from Mary Phelps. She says, I think that people should be able to build a storage barn on their property adjacent or not.
I can't hear.
I can't hear you either, Chris.
Okay, sorry, I turned my head and I forgot this thing is very directional. All right, Mary Phelps says. I believe that people should be able to build a storage barn on their property adjacent or not. If blight is a fear, that should be handled individually. If shooting is an issue, then call the police. Wouldn't the building inspector have to approve these buildings? Do not punish all responsible citizens.
Thank you. Marshall?
Yes, okay, can, all right, um. I'm. I appreciate Mary's comment, I was thinking of mine, I appreciate her and I understand it also. Um. And then I know there are regulations of, at least I, I guess it's the ag. What, we changed it from five acres to seven, it, seven acres with the footage of what you can build on a pole barn. I don't know if that applies to the residential or the recreational area. Um, I'm, just know that, um, yes, if people have land. I think it should be, if it's not with adjacent to the property, I think it should be special use permit. And as we know, when a special use permit. Is given, uh, all the neighbors or the people that own property. Within so many feet of that have an opinion and they can go to a hearing, which seems fair to me. Um, but, because maybe somebody wants, has a lot of acreage and if they. And maybe their next neighbor is not nine hundred feet or whatever, I think it should meet out to more of the area. To, uh, comment on the pole barns and such. I mean, if somebody's got seven acres, but maybe their seven acres is right across the street from. A small residential area and they wanna big, a, big, build a big pole barn or something on it. I think people should have the comments on it, even if this person happens to own, or these people own property. Within maybe two miles of where it is, I mean, you know, if the neighbors don't care and if you go through the rules and regulations. Then. That's okay, but I think it should be, if it's not within two hundred feet as you suggested. It should always be a special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comments? I don't see anything in the chat. If there are no other comments. I would like to close public comment at nine sixteen.
Leslie, I, I think I see a comment from Christie. Oh, we had a public comment?
Yeah, I did state a couple of things, um, one is. That when you guys were going over the ICP, um, and you got to those with the ambulance, senior services. Um. I can't remember what the last one was now. Um.
Library.
Library, that was under a category that very specifically stated existing facilities. And I didn't feel like we have any existing facilities for those three things. Um, and then also I wanted to note that if somebody builds something on ag property. It cannot be used as a racetrack later because it's ag land and that's not an allowable use. Um, I did have a couple other things, I just, just questions to ask yourselves as you guys are, um, moving forward with some of these. Items is, um, the adult group and childcare group. If those have to be in commercial districts, why are we requiring signage to be so small? And then, um, again, why wouldn't we allow those outside of the commercial district? Uh, there was also a mention about a potential health department issue in an earlier comment. And we have no control over that at the township level, so that. Shouldn't be something that the town, that the planning commission is trying to dive into. Um, and then I just wanted to share that the township actually has an employee that would love to have. A. Piece of property here that they could put a. Pole barn on to store their boat and snowmobiles. Um, that doesn't mean that they wanna come out and party every weekend, they just want someplace to store things. So keep in mind that not everyone, um, is going to be out here to party. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Then I'll amend the closing of public comments to nine eighteen. And is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Was that Bev?
Yes.
Okay. So there was a motion to adjourn at nine eighteen by Bev, is there a second?
I'll second.
Supported by Anita. Do a roll call, Dave?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Anita?
Yes.
Leslie, yes, motion passes. Thank you all, have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone, thank you.